Members of the public are invited to attend in-person meetings in council chambers. Public access is also available by telephone, by using the call-in numbers posted on the meeting agenda, and tonight's meeting will be broadcast on the city's YouTube channel online. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Leidy?
Here.
Mayor Protem Lukman-Hiramasa?
Here.
Councilmember Burns?
Here.
Councilmember Hadamio?
Here.
Councilmember Condo?
Here.
Councilmember Roper?
Here.
Councilmember Goff?
Here.
Councilmember Nowicki?
Here.
And Councilmember Walker will be late tonight.
Thank you. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Manager Guyer, are there any responses to resident inquiries?
Nothing this evening, Mayor and Council.
Oh, sorry. Are there any additions or deletions to tonight's agenda? No? Okay. Moving to public invited to be heard, this is an opportunity for public comment on any item not set for public hearing. Statements are limited to five minutes per speaker. Statements must be related to city business and limited to matters of community interest. City Clerk Small, is there anyone signed up to speak to council tonight?
Yes, Madam Mayor, there are two individuals on the list. The first person is Tom Lampo.
Please state your name and address or ward and provide your comments to council.
All right, thank you. Hello to everyone. It's good to be here in front of Northland, in front of you guys. My name's Tom Lampo, 3951 Jackson Way, and I'm here to lift Northland up in prayer. Please join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, in Jesus' name, we ask you to join us here tonight and every day in Northland. You're the living God, and you are welcome here. We were feeble without you, but you give us the strength to make a difference. You make all things possible because of who you are. Isaiah 43:10 declares your preeminence. "You are my witness," declares the Lord, "and my servant whom I have chosen, that you may know and believe me and understand that I am he. Before me no God was formed, nor shall there be any after me." Nothing came before you and nothing we conceive or plan we devise can challenge your authority. All situations are in your control. We can rest in you. Tonight, I want to lift up to you, all the young people in Northland. Children are a gift from you. They are looking for direction and susceptible to being led astray. Bless them with the strength and character found in Romans 12:2, which states, "Do not conform to the pattern of this world, but be transformed by the renewing of your mind; then you will be able to test and approve what God's will is, his good, pleasing, and perfect will." This world is not easy, but if you bless them with your perfect will, they will have your word to rely on. Father, incredible times we are living in, a true spiritual battle for the ages. We don't see the battle, but we experience it in our daily lives. Many in our community are struggling, which is a true testament to how as a society we don't have the answers. Our plans have failed. We've kept you out of our public life. You know the future. We can agree on the here and now. Tonight, I lift up to you, all that live in Northland. Be with the entire community and give hope to all of us. Romans 15:13 says, "May the God of hope fill you with all joy and peace in believing, so that by the power of the Holy Spirit you may abound in hope." We'll keep you to your word. You are the God of hope. Fill us all so hope is overflowing and leaves no room for fear. Help us rest in the comfort you offer. You are our God, and we are your people. In Jesus' precious name, we pray. Amen. Thank you, guys. Have a nice night.
Thank you.
The next person on the list is Ken Spady.
Welcome. Please state your name and address or ward and provide your comments to council.
Good evening. My name is Ken Spady. I live in Bailey, Colorado, 82 Bluebird Drive. I was doing business in your fine town of Northland, leaving a hardware store in the parking lot. Underneath my vehicle, I have an old vehicle, leaks a little oil. Leaks a little oil on the crank sensor every once in a while. It's 250,000 miles. I'm a good mechanic, and I take care of myself. Things may be hundreds of thousands of dollars. I don't need a $100,000 truck. Crawling in my truck, spraying it off, cleaning it up, plugging it back in, I'm crawling out of my truck. One of your fine, blue-lined little idiots with a badge asked me, "Can I help you?" I said, "No, I'm good, thank you." I explained what was wrong. I said, "I've got to get going to my job." He said, "Sir, I need your ID." I said, "Excuse me?" He said, "Sir, I need your ID." We do live in America, right? Everybody, we live in America? We're not required to give our ID because some Nazi asked for it, right? Are we on the same page here? So this frickin' psychopath asked me for my ID, and I refused. I said, "My father was a World War II vet. I don't have to give you my ID unless I break the law, sir." And I got in my truck. He came out for 15 minutes, pressured me. Read my license plate. No warrants, not stolen, it's insured. Kept pressing, pressing, pressing. "I need your ID." See, what I realize is ID for cops, it's like crack. "I need your ID! I need your ID!" You guys are crack-addicted to your IDs. It's sick. We're in America. My father fought for my freedoms. I'm not going to give it away and let some punk beat me up. So anyway, because he wanted my ID, he broke my window? They pulled me out of the vehicle. I had to have glass removed after he drove me around in his car a little bit, and then they finally took me to the emergency room. Then after that, he continued to torture me. Put the cuffs on my hands so tight, I've got nerve damage. I'm begging him, "Sir, stop. You're killing my hand. I've been to the nerve or the hand surgeon twice already. I've got two more appointments this week." Then, after he beat on me, kept me pinned up in this cage, after he kidnapped me, I should say, abducted me, he tortured me. Put me in this little concrete thing, and I'm begging him. 18 months ago, I was just poisoned by 18% or 23% asbestos. I cough up this phlegm. I'm begging him for my Arbuteral because I can't breathe. For 15 hours, I was in your custody, your city's custody, 15 hours, begging for Arbuteral because I can't breathe, puking up mucus. Then after he tortures me here for eight hours, still don't have a charge. Still don't have a charge! This is America, right? I'm free? I'm free until I break the law, right? Is that the rules, Mayor? Can you answer that question for the record, please?
Keep going. You have five minutes, sir.
Okay. I didn't break the law. I refused to give my ID to a Nazi. I had no reason to give you the ID. I'm not a convict. I have no criminal records. I'm a business owner. I have an insurance license, my real estate license. I coached youth sports, football, baseball, wrestling, softball, and volleyball. Every one of those things, I had to have a federal background check. Yet I was treated like a piece of dog shit by a psychopath, tortured me. Then after he tortured me, still no crime, still no charges, they hauled me to Brighton, cranked it again, cranked that cuff on. He knows exactly where the nerves are because all you pigs know where the fucking pinch points are, don't you? Deliberately put that cuff on there. I'm begging, I'm crying, "Sir, my hand." At the same time, I'm coughing up mucus, begging for air. "Please roll down the window." The other officer rolled it down for me. Old Mr. Lackey, he rolled it up. I'm pretty certain he turned the heater on, too. But then he hauled me to see four of his blue-lined gang members, big steroid thugs. I'm not sure what he told them. I go in there, first thing, "Sir, I'm not here to fight you guys. I need air. I need Arbuteral." Begging for Arbuteral. Slam me down. I'm coughing. Some phlegm happens to come up. They see that. They fucking pick me up, throw me into a concrete fucking wall in America. Said, "Not in our house." I'm trying to breathe. I'm trying to get the mucus out so I can take air in in its place. And then two more big fucking steroid goons grab me, take me around the corner on the bench. I go to step on this bench. "No, on your knees, motherfucker! These are cops." I get on my knees, hanging over about that far. One big fuck on each side driving his leg in. The other two goons pretending they're pulling my boots off. "Where do you guys pull your boots off? Do you pull your boots off from your heel, or do you pull them off from up here?" These fucks acting like they're pulling my boots off, trying to break my leg over this steel bench, trying to get me to fight. I told them, "I'm not going to fight you" because I knew if I went to the ground with 900 pounds of steroid fucking pricks on my back, I would have been dead. I was scared to my life. What did I do? What's the crime? A sergeant showed up to de-escalate in about a minute. He's the one who gave him orders to break my window. Well, I'm Gaspard Farrar. You have my mayor number, or you have my number, Mayor. I'll see you guys. Thanks. Thanks for visiting America.
Thank you.
Lackey, and I'm not sure who the sergeant was, but this little skinny guy looks like Barney Fy with his porno stash, and he shakes like a dog shit in a razor blade when he had hold of me. It's like, dude, what are you shitting your pants? And these are cops. These are cops. And it starts from the leadership down. Because since Thursday, I came to your police department, asked you to speak to the chief or at least a lieutenant. Hooked me off, hooked me off, hooked me off, hooked me off all week.
Thank you, sir.
Told Adams County, asked to report.
Thank you, sir.
Are you going to end my time because I'm telling the truth?
No, you're just over time. Thank you.
There's no extensions for this kind of circumstances?
No, thank you.
Great, thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else in the audience who did not have a chance to sign up that would like to speak to council tonight?
Watch my YouTube. Preston was silver spade. If I can't get help from my own police department, my own city government, I'm going to take it to the court of the American people. We're sick of the cops beating up the uneducated people hide behind that badge. I dare any one of those fucking cowards to beat me outside without that badge on. I'm 60 fucking years old. 60 years old. Go ahead and bang it, bitch.
Sir, I need you to go. Thank you very much.
I love us Americans.
Is there anyone in the audience that did not have a chance to sign up that would like to speak to council?
Who wants to? Who wants to? I'm the kid. Do I have any reports? Can I ask a question later? When?
There are two opportunities for public comment, but it is not a question and answer. So you can provide your comments to council, and we take notes, but we do not respond. You're welcome. All right. We have three proclamations tonight, so if council would like to join me down front. Okay, first up tonight, I would like to welcome one of our dice board members, Celeste Jackson. Come on down. She's going to accept our Seatbelt Day proclamation. Whereas November 14th is recognized across the United States as National Seatbelt Day, a time to highlight the lifesaving importance of buckling up on every trip, every time. And whereas the city of Northland is committed to safeguarding the health, safety, and welfare of all who live in, work in, and visit our community. And whereas wearing a seatbelt is one of the simplest and most effective ways to reduce serious injury and death from motor vehicle crashes and national seatbelt use among adult front-seat occupants in 2024 was estimated at 91.2%. And whereas Coloradans are buckling up in greater numbers with the statewide seatbelt use rate reaching 90.7% in 2025, the highest ever recorded for our state. Whereas Colorado law requires seatbelt use and emphasizes education and enforcement through initiatives such as ClickIt or Ticket, with primary enforcement for teen drivers and their passengers, and secondary enforcement for adults. And whereas the city of Northland encourages residents to model safe behavior by always buckling up and ensuring that every passenger is properly restrained and to promote seatbelt use within their families, workplaces, schools, and community groups. Now, therefore, I, Meredith Leidy, Mayor of the City of Northland, Colorado, do hereby proclaim November 14th, 2025, as Seatbelt Day in the city of Northland, and encourage community members to join me in promoting seatbelt use on every trip and to support our shared commitment to safer roads, dated at Northland, Colorado this 10th day of November 2025. So, thank you for being here. This is for you, and I want to thank you for elevating this for the city. Would you like to add?
Well, seatbelts are incredibly important, and Colorado using seatbelts really matters, so please buckle up every time. Thank you.
Okay, next up, this proclamation will be accepted by Councilmember Catherine Goff. Transgender Awareness Month. Whereas November is recognized nationally as Transgender Awareness Month, dedicated to celebrating the accomplishments and visibility of transgender and gender diverse people while raising awareness of the challenges they continue to face. And whereas the city of Northland values the strength, resilience, and contributions of all members of our community, including our transgender, non-binary, and gender expansive residents. And whereas Transgender Day of Remembrance, observed on November 20th, memorializes those whose lives have been lost to acts of anti-transgender violence and reminds us of the importance of creating a safe and affirming environment for everyone. And whereas the city of Northland reaffirms its ongoing commitment to diversity, inclusivity, and social equity by supporting policies, programs, and practices that promote safety, dignity, and equal opportunity for all residents regardless of gender identity or expression. Whereas the Diversity, Inclusivity, and Social Equity Board and community partners continue to promote understanding and acceptance through education, events, and advocacy that celebrate the lived experiences of our transgender neighbors. And whereas the city recognizes that an inclusive and welcoming community strengthens our city fabric and ensures that every individual has the opportunity to live authentically and contribute meaningfully to the collective well-being of Northland. Now, therefore, I, Meredith Leidy, Mayor of the City of Northland, Colorado, do hereby proclaim November 2025 as Transgender Awareness Month in the city of Northland, and encourage all residents to join me in honoring the strength and courage of our transgender community members, to listen with compassion, and to work together toward a more inclusive, understanding, and equitable city for all, dated at Northland, Colorado this 10th day of November 2025. So, thank you. Would you like to say a few words?
Yes. Great. Thank you very much. And I need to read this so I don't get too emotional and forget what I want to say. I am accepting this proclamation on behalf of my daughter, who I have known and loved since the day she was born. I also am accepting this on behalf of all transgender people, especially now when they are being threatened in so many ways. I watched my daughter grow up, and like all parents, I worried when she was sick, when she was sad, when she struggled with something that no one seemed to understand. I lost sleep. I tried to help. We went through some difficult times, but now I see her happy and happily married. She has a good job and owns a home and is a productive member of society. She is not a threat to anybody. I thought I could go back to the usual worries that all parents have for their adult children, but I am losing sleep again. I worry for her and all those who are being attacked for being themselves, for being someone that some people don't understand, don't like, and don't really know at all. I am so grateful for communities like Northland and for our city council for continuing to support all our residents and standing up for those who are being unjustly persecuted. So, thank you.
Okay. I think I got everybody. Councilmember Condo, if I can have you take one step either direction?
No.
There you go. Great. Just nudge everybody out of the way. All right, are you ready? One, two, three. Mile? One more. Okay, thank you.
All right, and this last one, I don't know if you know there's a birthday today. Some people know. It's a pretty big one. All right. Thank you for being here. Look at this sharp guy. Yeah. All right. Whereas the United States Navy, established by the Continental Congress on October 13th, 1775, and the United States Marine Corps, established on November 10th, 1775, have stood as pillars of strength, honor, and service in defense of our nation for 250 years. And whereas from the earliest days of the American Revolution to the present day, members of the Navy and Marine Corps have demonstrated unwavering courage, discipline, and dedication, protecting our freedom, ensuring maritime security, and upholding the highest traditions of military service. And whereas the Navy and Marine Corps have embodied their shared core values of honor, courage, and commitment, serving not only in times of war but also in times of peace, humanitarian relief, and global partnership. And whereas 2025 marks the 250th anniversary of both the Navy and Marine Corps, an extraordinary milestone that celebrates the sacrifices, achievements, and legacy of generations of sailors and Marines who have served under the nation's flag. And whereas earlier in 2025, the United States also celebrated the 250th birthday of the U.S. Army, established on June 14th, 1775, whose service members have stood alongside the Navy and Marine Corps in defense of liberty and the pursuit of peace throughout our nation's history. And whereas the city of Northland recognizes and honors the service and sacrifice of all who have worn the uniform of the Navy and Marine Corps, including the veterans, reservists, active-duty personnel, and their families who continue to represent the strength and spirit of our community. And whereas as a city that values patriotism, community, and public service, Northland expresses profound gratitude to those who serve and have served in the sea services for safeguarding the ideals of freedom and democracy at home and abroad. Now, therefore, I, Meredith Leidy, Mayor of the City of Northland, Colorado, do hereby proclaim the year of 2025 as a time to commemorate the 250th birthdays of the United States Navy and the United States Marine Corps in the city of Northland. I urge all community members to join me in honoring the proud heritage, enduring service, and noble sacrifice of the members of the United States Navy and United States Marine Corps, dated at Northland, Colorado this 10th day of November 2025. And so we do have our esteemed council member, Richard Condo, with a few words.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, thank you, council, also for supporting this proclamation, which really celebrates a major milestone in the history of our sea services as well as the U.S. Army. So I don't want to forget about the Army. But I do want to also acknowledge...
And the Air Force.
Actually, the Air Force came much later.
Yeah.
There is this thing called inter-service rivalry, right? Are there any veterans in the room, though? And if there are, please stand and be recognized. You know, we as a city have devoted a great deal of recognizing, besides the proclamation, we do have our Veterans Memorial. And just a reminder, tomorrow, 11:00 a.m., it's the 11th hour of the 11th day of the 11th month. That was the end, or so-called armistice, that ended World War I. So we, every year, have a ceremony to honor those who have died in service of our country. And I would encourage you to come and be a part of that. That is really something very special. And then finally, I do want to just underscore that the Navy is indeed a global force for good and that it was founded by Abraham Lincoln, or not Abraham Lincoln, rather, Benjamin Franklin, one of our founding fathers. He also founded the fire service, by the way. But you know, this is, these are the bedrock things that I think we need to hold on to as a country right now when we're going through so much turmoil. So I really do appreciate this recognition. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
Let's back to the middle. That makes such a fun noise. I know.
All right, we have a presentation tonight by our Diversity, Inclusivity, and Social Equity Board. This is the annual update. So we have our Dice Board Chair, Chris Semino, and Vice Chair, Ryan Easterling-Babbin. Welcome.
First and foremost, thank you for having us. We love doing this every year, and we're really excited because we've done a lot this past year, so thank you very much. Also, just a side note, Dr. Goff, I wish my mom said the kind words that you said, so thank you so much for being the supportive parent you are. That was amazing, so thank you very much. All right, jumping right into this, this is our board update for the year. All right, first, on the agenda, we're going to talk about our background and purpose of the Diversity, Inclusivity, and Social Equity Board. Then we're going to talk about the activities of the board, our 2025 work plan, our year in review of 2025, and then our 2026 work plan as well. All right, I'm sure you guys have heard this in previous year's slides, but our background was that the Diversity, Inclusivity, and Social Equity Board was created by ordinance number 1796 on August 24th of 2020. The purpose is that we support the city council's strategic focus on cultivating diversity, inclusion, and belonging. We're part of the Strategic Plan Number Six for the 2025-2029 Strategic Plan. Jumping into activities, we develop an annual work plan to include priorities and goals that advance the equity in the city. We celebrate and encourage the understanding of the diversity of the city's population. We help create robust opportunities for community input and collaboration, and using community feedback to help inform future decision-making and creating a climate of inclusion and increasing cultural awareness within the city.
So our 2025 work plan was to continue advancing awareness, equity, and community -- So, our 2025 work plan was to continue advancing awareness, equity, and community connection. Sorry, my mouth is very dry. So, we also sought to continue the following objectives, which is education, community awareness, policy review, and recommendation. We also put a lot of community feedback into everything we have done this past year, collaboration, and community recognition. We had the following guest speakers for our meetings in 2025. Mr. Mark Fink from Anything Library, Dr. Catherine Goff, Heather Geier, Justin Perdue, Patrick Berger, Peter Rice. The CCP Board attended one of our meetings as well, and Rachel Henny, who was at the majority of our meetings helping us. She is truly a lifesaver and a gem to the city, in my opinion. So, we did several proclamations over the course of 2025. We did the Mental Health Awareness Month. We did Pride Month proclamation, Juneteenth, Hispanic Heritage Month, Substance Abuse Prevention Month, Seatbelt Day, and Transgender Awareness Month. Some of the city's events that we have done on May 9th, we participated in a From Stress to Best workshop hosted by the City for Mental Health. Okay. The workshop focused on simple shifts that lead to a calmer life, including breathwork, visualization, and movement. Participants, including myself, learned how stress impacts the body and mind, and picked up tips to conquer stress and live a more balanced life, which that was a great event, in my opinion. On June 7th, the Dice Board sponsored the North Glenn Pride Event, which attracted 1,300 people to this family-friendly event that placed LGBTQ+ performers and artists front and center for an afternoon of fun, entertainment, booths, food, and togetherness.
On June 19th, the board partnered with the North Glenn Arts and Humanities Foundation to host a Juneteenth event. It was a goal of all of us after last year's Juneteenth, to make it its own standalone legitimate event. And we delivered with the help of the North Glenn Arts and Humanities Foundation. The event featured a collaboration with the Dream Center Inspire Tour to showcase Black artists, entrepreneurs, and cultural leaders. The board is continuing this partnership with the NHF to host a standalone Juneteenth celebration every year. And we got so much positive feedback from you guys and from the community on that one. And in July and August, our Dice members attended Neighborhood Nights, events across the city. We enjoyed time engaging with city council, our neighbors in the local parks, sharing music, food, and movies, getting feedback from our community, and giving out swag, which seems to be ever so popular. On August 23rd, we participated in the People's Pow Wow held at E.B. Raines Junior's Memorial Park. The event was an amazing way to celebrate our indigenous community and honor sovereignty and learn about traditions. If you guys have never been, I encourage it highly. It is a fantastic event. Then, on October 18th, we hosted a free community mini ofrendas workshop with the North Glenn Arts and the Latino Cultural Arts Center, the LCAC. This is our second year doing workshops with them. Participants explored the rich tradition of Day of the Dead, Dia de los Muertos. I can't pronounce it properly. We learned about the symbolism of ofrendas, and the importance of offerings, why gaining insight to coping with grief, and through personal and cultural practices. It is fantastic. They do breathwork. They explain the traditions, the history. To someone like me who's Italian, it's so cool to learn about different cultures. So, I was all about it. And Ryan and I showed off our kind of cool artistic skills, I think. Kind of. Then, at Noel North Glenn, which is coming up, I highly encourage you guys to invite your friends and family. That's going to be December 5th. We are sponsoring an author activity with a local North Glenn author, Naisha Williams, to celebrate her new book, Once Upon a Kwanzaa. Participants will be gifted a copy of the book at the event, one per family. The board will also be hosting our sensory backpacks. And it's a great way to close out 2025 and actually touch on a different culture we haven't been able to touch on before, which is Kwanzaa.
Y'all should have been given copies of the book as well. Rachel stopped me in the hall. She's like, "The books are here. The books are here." So, perfect. In February, the Dice Board advocated for the reversal of a decision to cancel the city's Pride Event in favor of joining a larger Adams County event, highlighting the importance of maintaining the event locally as a symbol of the city's support and commitment to the LGBTQ+ community in North Glenn. So, we sincerely thank you for allowing us to continue with the Pride Event. It was a success. We had so much fun out there. There were people from all over. The city's names in a lot of people's mouths that don't live here. So, that's great. We're getting out great word. In May, Dice partnered with the Immigrant Legal Resource Center to provide red cards to individuals in our community that may have questions about their rights regarding immigration issues. The cards are free of charge and available in different languages. The cards are intended to be a helpful resource, but do not provide legal advice. All people in the United States, regardless of immigration status, have certain rights and protections under the U.S. Constitution. The IRLRC's red cards give example of how people can exercise these rights. Another accomplishment, which was a huge accomplishment because this is very much loved, the Dice Board budgeted funds to purchase and replenish meaningful giveaways for the community, including the Diversity is Beautiful Children's Coloring Books and Crayons. The board hosted sensory backpack stations at city events. We also recruited four new Dice Board members. Ms. Anne Navarez, Madison Leidy, Wiley Renfred, and in a few minutes, Abby Hosterman. Hopefully, I'm saying her name right. I just met her. The Dice Board issued several statements regarding the termination of the LGBTQ+ crisis support, political violence, and the strength of our community, federal legislation impacts, the One Beautiful Bill, the denial of early retirement benefits to transgender service members, were some of our statements that were made. We still are providing continued support for the development of Odell Berry Park.
So, now, moving forward into 2026, we're going to follow a lot of the skeletal framework of what we've done in the past that was successes for us. But to dive into a little deeper, we're going to continue awareness campaigns. We're going to launch a monthly campaign focused on different themes related to DEI, using social media, workshops, and community events. We're going to partner with local schools, libraries, and cultural organizations to promote awareness of these events. We're also looking into, this is a longer-term goal now, a multicultural festival similar to like what the City of Aurora does with their Global Fest, explore the potential of doing this citywide event, what diverse communities to reach out to, and what to look into. This is just starting to plant the seed and get that kind of going forward. We're going to continue engagement with North Glenn Arts, explore a partnership with them, and have a presence at certain productions that the partisan theater does to encourage continuing the story at home. So, for example, say it's the Cleo Parker Robinson School of Dance during Black History Month. We're going to figure out a way to continue that conversation. And now that you come home, you know, let's learn about Rosa Parks or whoever might have been incorporated in that production that year. Other offerings we'd like to get involved with is if the Heart of Afghanistan comes back, or Making Cake, or any of those similar productions as well. We also want to look into seeking sponsorships more. We learned very importantly, thanks to Larry, who's actually in the audience, that King Super sponsored our Juneteenth in a big way. And we learned the value of stretching the dollar with these valuable sponsorships. So, I want to explore getting more sponsorship on events, so we lessen the impact of the financial strain on the city, and we're able to bring more people involved into these events. So, right now, what it looks like is in January, we're going to hold officer elections for the chairperson and vice chairperson. Then, we're going to try to assign the activities early on. One of the things I think a lot of you guys noticed is either Ryan or myself ride almost every single event. And as much as we love being with you all, we'd like to divide the workload. So, we're going to do sign-ups early, so hopefully make that happen. In February, we're going to look into doing our Safe Business Program. We still talked about doing this last year, but when we were met at a juncture of two different events hitting us at once, we had to kind of divert a little bit and kind of restructure how we're going to do it. So, we put it off on the back burner for a year. So, we're going to get that Safe Business Program launched and start rolling at this point. Then, we're going to explore development of future events. One thing that we want to do for AAPI or for our Asian population is doing a Lunar New Year event. Now, this year, feasibly, February comes fast. We're not sure if we're going to get it off this year, or maybe just do a workshop. We're probably going to push it and continue to do our AAPI activation at the Food Truck Carnival. But, we're looking into the future, making that shift. In March, Brain Injury Awareness Month, we're going to do a proclamation. We're going to request one. Also, Women's History Month, do a proclamation as well. April, Autism Awareness Month, we'd like to request a proclamation for. Then, May, Mental Health Awareness Month, once again. Our AAPI Islander Month, our Older American Month, and our Food Truck Carnival, of course, we're going to have a presence at at least this year. Then, into June, Pride Month, we're bringing it back. Hopefully, with your support. We absolutely keep getting positive feedback. When I'm not here, being your chairman, I'm actually Mr. Gay Pride of All Colorado. So, I'm out in the community a lot more this year, and I'm hearing, "North Glenn, North Glenn, North Glenn, North Glenn." It's kind of cool to be hearing our city and people talking about it in such a positive light about what we bring to the city by doing that event. Juneteenth, we'll also come back. Another popular event, our two biggest events seem to come in the same month and hit us at the same time, but they're phenomenal. We don't want to stop the momentum we have going. Then, July, our Neighborhood Nights, we want to get engaged in those again. Our Disability Awareness Month proclamation, we'll request as well. August, Neighborhood Nights will continue on. The People's Pow Wow usually comes up around this time of year. I'll be getting with Felicia as fast as I can to discuss that and try to have a bigger footprint at that event. September, we're going to start developing. Next year's work plan for 2027, and then request a Hispanic Heritage Month proclamation. October, we'd like to continue our LCAC workshops for the Day of the Dead. We've already done a shirt, what did we do? We did, last year, a candle-making one, and we did another one, other picture frame, tin punch picture frames. We'll see what else they offer, maybe switch it up or go back to one of those ones from the previous year. Our Substance Abuse Awareness Month, we're going to request a proclamation. We're going to work on our 2027 work plan. November, Transgender Awareness Month, we'll request a proclamation once again. We're going to hopefully bring back the Seatbelt Day proclamation, and then be reporting back to you guys like we are tonight. Then, December, once again, as always, Noel North Glenn, and I'm looking so forward to it. It's going to be great. So, our additional plans for 2026 are getting that Safe Business Program launched and rolling. We have a budget of about $600 for the stickers. We already have some ideas of how we want to implement that, get designs, et cetera. We're going to start working on that more so. Our Immigration Resources, continue with those red cards. We've gotten positive feedback. We watch people take stacks of them at our events and be like, "Oh, my gosh, I'm going to have my cousin, my friend, my coworker." So, it's kind of cool that people know we have them. And then, the Sensory Backpack Station, we're going to work on making people more aware of this. Some of that came from Lisa, our staff liaison. She's going to get some signs made for us to actually advertise a lot better, like, "We have these sensory backpacks. It's what's in them. What you need to do?" But we're going to work harder on that.
Some additional plans for 2026, we're going to try to develop a community survey. Distribute at events and via social media. This is measuring engagement and going to help us inform future planning. So, the community is going to input information to us. That way, we can help plan more events that the city wants to see. We're going to explore possibilities for event sponsors with respect to emerging financial conditions. And we're definitely going to expand our collaboration with the North Glenn Arts and Humanities Foundation, maintain the Dice work plan as a living document, continue to partner with the city to incorporate DE and I into events, increase community awareness, advocacy, and participation through educational workshops, events, and any other outreach opportunities. These opportunities could come from this survey. That is our goal. So, we thank you for your support. We love doing what we're doing. I enjoy it, seeing people at events, smiling faces. That makes this all worth it to me.
I'm just echoing what Ryan said. The positive feedback this year has been crazy. I've been part of this board since 2023. This has been the year we've gotten the most positive feedback, the most engagement from you guys in council. Juneteenth especially, that was one I was bombarded with positive feedback about. But you guys have really supported wonderful things in the city, and people are talking about us. As you all know, the news was out at Juneteenth with the news reporting live from our festival lawn. I mean, that's pretty awesome. So, we thank you guys so much because we can't be doing what we're doing without your support and your help. And we're willing to meet you guys as a collaboration and work with you in any way possible. Do you guys have any questions?
Any comments or questions for the Dice Board? Councilmember Roper?
Thank you both for being here, and thank you Dice Board for being here. We appreciate, I know, I appreciate the work that you do and the lens that you bring to our city. If you had to name, since you both were at many of the events, what has been your favorite event that you've put on?
Honestly, this year, I adore the Pride Event, for sure. But the way Juneteenth happened, making it an event like almost standalone compared to what it was last year, that warmed my heart the most this year because I loved seeing the community engagement, the news reporters being out there. That was just a whole nother level to me. They tried to do a live thing with me, but I declined. So, but that was, that has to be the top for me this year.
For me, with a biased lens, Pride, because I love Pride. But, reality, I have to echo what Ryan said. Juneteenth this year exceeded our expectations, the fandance. No one was there at the end. Towards the end, they did the fandance. We've been waiting for the fandance to happen. Watching this dance was so cool, and watching people do this, and the smiles on people's faces, and the joy it brought was everything to me. It was heartwarming. So, Juneteenth, for sure.
Thank you.
Councilmember Nowiki?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Chris, Ryan, thank you both for being here. Thank you for all of your work. You know, I think this presentation, there's a lot in here. It's very meaty. You guys bring a lot to the city, and all of the Dice Board as well. So, I want to thank you guys for, you know, continuing to do that, and for, you know, continuing to advocate for various communities, and, you know, continuing to kind of speak to us and collaborate with us. Thank you again for everything you've done this last year.
Thank you very much for your support.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you both for being here. Your schedule is very organized. I was very impressed. You have everything laid out for the upcoming months. So, great job on that. And great job overall. Like, I love going to the events. I'm excited for possibly a Lunar New Year, a Lunar New Year, easy for me to say. That would be a pretty cool addition. But I wanted more information on your Safe Business Program. I guess I'm not too familiar. Like, what does that entail? I would love to know a little bit more.
Well, due to certain things that are happening federally, politically, certain populations are targeted more by other groups and such. So, that's what started to plant the seed of this event. It's basically if one of our community members, no matter what walk of life you're from, no matter what's going on or in a crisis situation of being harassed out in public in our cities, you can run, you know, into this business. This business will have certain training about how to deescalate that, find you help, the second facet of it. If you're somebody that is, you know, out trying to shop in North Glenn, you're not sure you're new to the area. You don't know if it's a safe area or not. They'll see the sticker, Safe Business Program. This is a process that took time to participate in some sort of training to be a safe space and equitable to all, and also be able to know how to connect with our law enforcement partners if, you know, the worst-case scenario is happening. Unfortunately, increasingly, we're getting emails. I know it's happened to me personally. Just because you look a certain way, or they assume you're part of a certain culture, getting some nasty feedback from people. So, try to prevent that and have policies and procedures in place for businesses to know how to handle it, or get you away from harm's way, or whoever might be harassing you. It's kind of the principle of it.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
Councilmember Burns?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, I was at CPPP when y'all were talking about this, and it sounds like a really cool program, just to have stickers in the window to just sort of like build community, which is awesome. Just want to say thank you and echo Mayor Protem basically took the words out of my mouth this time. The organization of the presentation was really well thought out. Very excited for Noel North Glenn. My children look forward to it every year. My daughter specifically with the snowball fight, she's two. So, it's a vibe. But thank you all for everything that you do, and building community, I think, right now is so important. And I continue to, I'm looking forward to continue to doing that with y'all. So, thank you.
Thank you so much.
I made a list of things. Thank you. I really enjoyed the presentation. Thank you for the work that you're doing, and also the way that you've expanded all of the different activities and focus areas. And thank you for the book. I'm so excited. Thanks. Thanks for presenting and for being here with us.
You're so welcome. We enjoy doing this, and we really enjoy working with you guys, and we look forward to what next year holds for us.
Yes, thank you all so much. Next year, we're going to make things happen. Thank y'all.
Awesome. Thank you. Okay, up next is our September 2025. Yes, clap for them. Good job. 2025 September update, our deputy city manager, Jason Loveland, is going to share some numbers with us.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I thank you for having me. As the mayor said, this is the third quarter financial update, where a lot of the presentation is indeed numbers. But we'll try to shed a little bit of light on what the numbers are telling us and where we're going. So, I'm going to start off with an update on sales and use tax, as we like to do. You can see, year-to-date collections are at $19.9 million. This is, remember, through August, sales that are then collected in September. So, we're kind of a month behind. Unfortunately, we're down 1.5% compared to this time last year. Behind that number in a little bit more detail, auto sales are down about 2.1%. That's actually a little bit better than it had been the last few months. So, it is, I don't want to say it's I don't want to say it's recovering, but, uh, at this point, it's better than it was. Uh, the food tax is up 5.9%. Uh, I know that we've talked about Safeway, so this does not include those numbers. We won't see those numbers in that impact until December, since they closed at the end of October. They'll remit in November and then I'll report in December. Uh, so food overall, uh, doing well. Uh, and then sales tax itself is down one and a half percent, uh, through September. Uh, in comparison, um, in 2024, uh, at this time of the year, uh, we were up 4.9%. Uh, the year prior to that, we were up 1.9% and the year before that, in 2022, we were up 6.8%. So, um, have had a nice run, um, and then we're unfortunately not in that, uh, moment uh, right now. We do have the sales through September, which I'm going to report in a couple of weeks, um, but I will share the not good news that it's actually gotten worse, uh, through September sales. Uh, year-over-year, September, uh, sales were down about 5%. And so we're now looking at sales and use tax being down about 1.9% versus this report, which is down 1.5%. So, um, obviously this is a key component of how we operate and so we'll, uh, update you, um, on those numbers as we, uh, learn more. Marijuana tax, which is included in that number, uh, is down 12%. You see that, uh, is the dotted line there. Um, I will say it's steadying, uh, from what was happening in 2024 with kind of the up and down, uh, reporting timing from certain organization, uh, businesses. Um, but that is, I think, something that we'll just expect to continue to see drop, um, over the, over the next few months. I'm going to go back a slide. So on page 11, uh, of the report, not part of the slides, but the actual report that we provide, uh, that's where we talk about the geographic areas, uh, within the city. Um, if you take a look at that, or you don't have to, I'm going to tell you, so you don't actually have to look at it, um, we're down about 1.2% when we take a look at these very specific geographic areas. Um, if you exclude, uh, our online, uh, sales, um, we're down about 5.9%. Um, so it doesn't mean that people aren't spending money in Northglenn or Northglenn residents aren't spending, uh, just means that they're continuing to do that in a different way. Uh, our online sales, uh, is up about 16%, so that's really helping, uh, carry. So when you do see that chart and you see a lot of red, that a lot of areas are down, um, it is being supported by those online sales, uh, like we've talked about in the past, uh, past reports. So I just wanted to highlight that as well. And then, any questions on the sales tax piece? Uh, so taking a look at the general fund, uh, you'll see the columns, the 2025 budget, what's year-to-date, uh, actual, the dollar variance in, uh, spending and collection rate. Uh, I'll say that the spending and collection rate on the far-right column are in line. Uh, we don't have any, uh, concerns on spending as far as they're proceeding as budgeted, uh, which is positive. Um, overall, uh, taxes and our governmental revenues are really in alignment, uh, with what we would expect. Uh, fines and forfeitures, um, ticket revenue is up about 10%. Uh, we do see quite a bit more, uh, in that line item for federal forfeitures that we've collected this year, about $290,000, uh, through those shared arrangements on other larger crimes that we get a equal or proportional share of. Uh, so that is something to note on the fines and forfeitures line that we don't typically see, um, on a ongoing basis. So total revenues at, uh, just under $26.7 million and total expenditures of 29.3, um, as you can see in that middle, middle column, excuse me. Uh, moving ahead to the Conservation Trust Fund, revenues generally, um, made up of lottery proceeds. Uh, those are down slightly, uh, year-over-year, but those total $377,539 with expenditures of $83,710. Again, the expenditures are, in this fund are one-time park-related projects and you can see the detail in the report, um, starting on about page 20. Uh, in the Capital Projects Funds, total revenues of $6.7 million, expenditures about 1.5. Uh, you'll see the other financing, uh, uses and sources, uh, those are our debt service payments, uh, that we made, uh, through this part, part of the year. The majority of those payments will be made, uh, December 1st. Uh, page 20 has more detail, um, on the actual expenditures that make up the Capital Projects Fund, if you have any questions on those. Uh, moving ahead to the Water Fund, uh, one note here is on the user charges and fees of $6.5 million. Consumption through September was down 4.4% uh, year-over-year. Uh, so total revenue in the fund of just over $11 million and expenditures of $6.5 million. Capital outlay, you'll see a spending of about $1.2 million and a budget of $11.3. Details on that are on page 21. Uh, in the wastewater funds, uh, kind of a similar, uh, story here, uh, revenues, uh, as expected, at $4.7 million, uh, through September, total expenditures of just under 2.4 million. Um, detail on their capital outlay within that fund are on page 22 of the report. Um, but from the operating side, as I mentioned, previous, um, salaries, benefits, you know, other supplies, materials, things like that are, are in line with the budget, so I'm not going to comment on the operating side of the things, uh, since we're, uh, within budget. Uh, Stormwater Fund, $356,000 revenue and $377,000 of expenditures. Those expenditures, um, really are tied to the end of a study, Stormwater Study Evaluation, uh, that will be coming forward, um, hopefully fairly soon. And then lastly, the Sanitation Fund, revenues of $1.4 million, expenditures of $2.2 million. Uh, again, collection spend rates, uh, in line, uh, with what was planned and, um, also aligns with kind of the, the history, uh, year-over-year expectations, uh, for that So a quick summary, uh, sales tax down one and a half percent over the prior year. Uh, general fund revenue is about, is down 2.1% given the sales and use tax. Intergovernmental revenue down six and a half percent. That was a known thing, uh, with the one-time ARPA funds, uh, from, from last year. Uh, license, licenses and permits are down, uh, over 30% for building and right-of-way, so we have less, we've had a lot of construction going. Uh, we know that as that tapers off, we're going to see declines in those areas and we are. Um, and then, as I mentioned, fines and forfeitures are up significantly with about $295,000 of the $415,000 increase, uh, coming from, uh, the federal side of things. I encourage you to visit our transparency website at, uh, northglennco openedgov.com where you can see every transaction if you so choose, or you can just see the, these reports in kind of a more dynamic and detailed way, uh, at your leisure. And that will be all for me tonight. Happy to answer any questions.
All right. Councilmember Condo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, thank you, Deputy City Manager. I, I have two questions. So obviously it's, it's disparaging to see that sales tax revenue is going down, but for the purposes of the audience members and, and viewing public, um, can you just, uh, answer whether we have sufficient cushion in our fund balance to be able to help us weather this downturn in sales tax revenue?
We do. We have, um, over 40%, I cannot remember the number exactly right now, over 40% fund balance, uh, which is, uh, truly a cushion to help, um, kind of steady the ship, if you will. Um, not on a forever basis, but, uh, through times like this, uh, we do have, uh, sufficient funds to, to help support us.
Okay, um, don't need an answer today, but I, I definitely would like to figure out or at least get an answer on, um, you know, how much the remaining gasoline in the tank is going to allow us to run, uh, in view of what we're seeing here and what you just presented tonight, so we could do that as a, as a separate conversation. I do have a second question and that is, it's, it's very interesting to me when I look at, um, the tables on pages 20 and 22, uh, regarding capital improvements, water and wastewater. It looks like there's a lot of projects that have yet to start and, so that might explain the underspend. I'm just curious, is that, are we expecting to see some of these projects kick off here in Q4 or will they, will they carry over into the next calendar year?
Uh, so taking a look, like at the Water Fund specifically, um, we do expect, uh, the chemical building, uh, work is really getting underway now. Uh, we're just finalizing contracts and getting through the design and permitting process take a little longer, uh, this year than expected, uh, but that should see some expenditures in the next 90 days, uh, otherwise that project will carry over, uh, to 2026. Uh, the other large one, uh, Section 36 water lines, uh, do not expect to see any spending on that in 2025 and will, uh, move to the, to the next year. Another large budget item in that is waterline replacement. Uh, so we use that for supporting waterline breaks, also at times when we're, have opportunity to be proactive about maybe known areas of concern, uh, to, to invest in those. Um, so there's some money being spent, but that money will continue to carry over, uh, in the fund, uh, kind of in, in the term of like a fund balance. And then on, I think you mentioned the wastewater side as well, uh, Lift Station B replacement, uh, not expecting to see, uh, any activity on that, uh, this year. Public Works has had a fair amount of transition with its engineer and operating staff, um, so trying to align things, uh, appropriately across the team. Um, so that's one, one that's being moved around to, to different groups.
Okay, and then can you just comment on page 20, the Residential Street Program? That one was funded for, for $1.1 million. Looks like we only spent $92,000. Is that, is that yet another item that's getting deferred or weather-dependent? Can, can you comment on that, please?
That one is active, uh, in November of this year, so hopefully, uh, the weather is lovely and they're able to tackle all of that work. Uh, but yeah, that work is starting this month and so hopefully we'll see that, um, get completed and spent.
Okay, thank you.
So I have a question that may help Councilmember Condo, but I'm just wondering, um, so on September 22nd, we had the public hearing for the annual budget and that included, if I recall, a forecasting of general fund balance, and so that may be a good place to start. Are you asking specifically for something else?
Just asking for clarity for the public.
Okay, so maybe clarity is, they could go back to the September 22nd, um, packet and all of those slides and all of that information is in there.
Correct.
Awesome, okay. Just checking. Great, thank you.
Nothing else for me.
All right, nothing else from us.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving to communications, we'll start with Councilmember Burns.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you to everyone who came out and expressed their voices to us this evening. And a big thank you to everyone who participated in our democracy last week and voted. Um, voting is very near and dear to my heart, um, so really appreciate that. Happy birthday Marine Corps from the halls of Montezuma. I would be remiss if I did not say that to my dear friends. Um, and then Youth Commission, um, they interviewed three new candidates, so very exciting. We were a little bit of a, little bit of a slow start, um, with turnover, um, so hopefully we're going to be picking momentum back up. Um, Legislative Committee met this evening, um, we are moving forward with the CML-initiated, um, bills, um, we, um, everyone hold their calendars for January 5th. We have slated our legislative dinner where we will be expanding, um, invites. We're working with our lobbyists to think of people who should be in the room, who are making decisions and we could, that impact our city for this coming year. Speaking of the state legislator, I think we've been talking about this, but I think it just, we should repeat ourselves that everyone just needs to buckle up. It's going to be a rough session, there's another giant hole in the budget, um, and I think we can expect some unfunded Band-Aid fights and, you know, just a lot of fights ahead, but just as we, as it looms closer, just wanted to say that again. That's all for me. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Walker?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Councilmember Noe Wiki?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, so, uh, as Councilmember Condo said, Veterans Day is tomorrow, uh, so ahead of time, I want to thank all the veterans who served and thank you, Councilmember Condo as well. Um, the Senior Center will once again be hosting the Veterans Day Celebration on November 11th at 11:00 AM. Uh, the event is free to attend and all are welcome. Uh, the event starts outside by the Veterans Memorial with the presentation of colors, a few speeches, and then a gun salute. Guests are then invited into the community rooms for free spaghetti lunch. Um, it is one of the most popular events of the year and it's usually attended by quite a few folks. Um, American Legion Post 22 will be on hand to present colors, provide a speech or two, the gun salute, and play taps. Um, for the lunch portion of the event, the Colorado Chord Company will once again sing patriotic songs. Uh, as is tradition, the mayor will emcee, um, and so she'll be there and if you'd like to speak the, uh, oh, sorry, I'm reading the last part. Lunch will be there as well. Dinner theater performance of Northglenn's Youth Theater, uh, Youth Theater Adams Family. Um, it's Thursday, November 20th at 10:00 AM, followed by lunch in the community rooms, served by some of the cast members. And finally, thank you to the DICE board, the wonderful book. I look forward to sharing it with my daughters. Thank you, that is all.
Councilmember Heremio?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I'd like to first, uh, like to thank the veterans who have served our country in the past, present, and who will serve in the future. Um, thank you for your service from all branches. Um, once again, um, I'd like to thank Councilmember Condo again, thank you for your service, sir. Um, and also the esteemed, um, members here and the, or people that are here attending that have served our country, thank you. Um, also, um, let's see, I'd like to congratulate all the recently elected officials that are serving at every level in the government and, uh, may they help guide our country in the correct direction, and this is from city council all the way up. So, uh, congratulations to my DICE members who have won their elections and, uh, yeah, so best wishes in the future and, uh, thank you for serving our community. Um, I'd like to thank the DICE board for being here in solidarity. Uh, thank you for the work that you do for our, uh, very diverse community that we celebrate here in Northglenn. Um, I'd also like to thank Northglenn Arts and Humanities Foundation for accepting, uh, art that I donated. It's called Monarch Butterfly and it's at the preschool, so, um, I attended preschool in Northglenn way back in the early 90s, so now I have some art here at the new preschool as I'm a, as a city council member, so full circle, so, um, thank you guys.
That's very sweet.
And I'd like to thank the community, I mean, uh, Communications Department for the, putting that in the connection, so thanks again and, uh, uh, happy early Veterans Day once again and thank you.
Thank you. That's very sweet. Thank you, Jay. Uh, Councilmember Goff?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so I just will echo what, uh, other council members have just said, uh, and also to thank the DICE board. It's amazing to see, you know, like so many of you out here just for this one, uh, one night for this presentation. Um, we, the, what I would, uh, wanted to report on is the couple of meetings I did this past month, um, preparing for tonight's presentation. And I want to thank not only the DICE board for their work on the events that we've done this year, but also on this presentation. And I want to also give a big shout out to, um, our city clerk Small and senior deputy clerk Andrews, especially Lisa Andrews has worked really hard. worked really hard herding all the cats and helping organize our presentation. So that's really all I have to report on tonight, so thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Condo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Back on October 29th, I attended, over at the Westminster Mac, the CDOT-sponsored Bus Rapid Transit Public Engagement Exercise. And I will tell you, that was the very first time I actually attended a CDOT outreach, and it's quite informative. Now, albeit this is all about creating a faster bus transit line from, I think it's 120th, all the way down south to Lake Wood or Littleton. But even though that bus line does not run into North Glenn, the terminus is Wagon Road. So I felt like it's important just to be able to understand, you know, the consequences and provide a little bit of input there. And so I would encourage you, the public, if there is an opportunity to go and participate and be a voice in trying to shape how public transit is going to look like in the next 25, 50 years, I would, I would strongly encourage you to do it, because they need your input. If you don't go, they won't know. And then all of a sudden, they will build it, and the question is, well, you know, is it really meeting the need? You need to provide and help, and I see some up and down nods, so that's good. You need to provide that input and help planners anticipate what the need is, because they cannot, they cannot just divine it through mental telepathy. Finally, I want to read the last two phrases in the Sailor's Creed. This is something I learned at the academy. I think it really applies here today. So the last two phrases, "I proudly serve my country's Navy Combat Team with honor, courage, and commitment," which our city clerk nicely put into the proclamation, so I really appreciate that. And then the last one, which I really am committed to, is "I am committed to excellence and the fair treatment of all." And I think that really, being the last sentence in the Sailor's Creed, says a lot. And it's just a few words. And so again, thank you, Madam Mayor and Council, for the proclamation and for recognizing what the sea services do. I know the Marine Corps would not like to be known as part of the Department of the Navy, but they are. And again, I, I very much appreciate the opportunity to be recognized. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Roper?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you again to the dice board that came out for your presentation. Thank you to all of our veterans out there. Happy Veterans Day tomorrow. Let's see, and just an update with the election, the districts, the Adams 12 Districts MLO did pass, and that will really support our North Glenn schools and give them a much-needed support in many ways, just to name a few. That world-class staff, mental health and safety, just making sure that our buildings are safe, and we have everything we need to keep our children safe throughout the day. We had Historic Preservation Commission, and they are sharing up their strategic plan, and they are going to bring that before, forward to council and present it to us. So they've been working really hard on it, refining it, and I'm excited for us to take a look at that. And that is all I have to report for tonight.
Thank you. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think we all forgot to mention the Business Appreciation Event that we all attended. Everyone was there. But I will start off by saying I echo what everyone else said about thanking our veterans, and happy birthday to the Marines and the Navy as well. But we did have our Business Appreciation Event. The theme was Gold Rush. It was one of the best-attended events, I think. It was very crowded. Excellent, great event, excellent businesses were recognized. I got to give out the Spirit Award to Second Time Sports, or yeah, Secondhand Sports. So that was really fun. Thank you to all our small business owners. You are the backbone of our city, and we appreciate you, and we need to continue to show them appreciation. Along those lines, I sit on the Business Retention and Expansion Committee, and just want to let all the business owners know that we do have holiday business after hours on December 12th at the Stone Hocker Historic. It's actually co-hosted with the Historic Planning Commission. So if you are a business owner, it would be great if you sign up for that. It's 4:30 to 7:00, I believe, and it'll be all decorated, beautiful, and a great place to go celebrate with our businesses, and good food, yeah. On the 30th, I attended, for the very first time ever, the Weld County Town Hall in Greeley, somewhere very, very far out in Greeley. Just felt like we were driving forever along with the city manager. And the guest speakers were the state demographer, Kate Watkins, who did an overview of, you know, trends in net migration, and employment, and age groups, and Weld County is definitely the trendsetter when it comes to the younger demographic in the next decade or so. That'll provide the workforce, so that was really interesting. Adams County was not doing too bad as well, but very informational presentation, and they did focus on Weld County, of course. For those that don't know, we have a very small flagpole piece of property in Weld County, which is where our wastewater treatment facility is, and our fire rescue department training facility as well. So that's why we went and attended. We got to meet some commissioners in Weld County who were very nice. And again, it's great for us to have that connection, considering we are looking at potential development in that area, like industrial development. And then Congressman Evans was also present and also spoke to everyone there. And he did stay after, afterwards for a while, and spoke to the city manager, Guyer, and myself as well. So very interesting conversations were had. And then we had our legislative meeting tonight, and Councilmember Burns reported out on that, so that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, I do want to echo your thanks to staff for the business awards event. It was so creative and so fun, and they do, and then just, really, they go above and beyond. But there's a team of three, and they work very, very hard. And so I just want to shout them out and say thank you to our economic development team. I have to say happy birthday to my dad and my brother. They are Marines, and I have what's called a Marine in the Making. Logan will graduate in December. He graduates on December 12th, so it'll be the first time that I miss the Business Appreciation Event, but I could not be more excited for that. Looking forward to Veterans Day tomorrow, and just a thank you to the American Legion Post 22. They do such an amazing job. They partner with us on the Fourth of July. They partner with us at Veterans Day at minimum. But really, they are such a lovely community partner. And so if you are a veteran, please come tomorrow, 11:00 a.m., right outside. It's a beautiful ceremony. And then I have a mayor's coffee on the 15th, which is next Saturday, 9:00 a.m. Gunther Tooties, please come out. We will chat, get to know each other, just have a casual time of checking in on everything that's going on in the city. A lot of other things have been covered. Congratulations again to Councilmember Condo. Thank you for being, being so spiffy tonight. All right, moving on to City Clerk Small.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have one quick item. I just wanted to announce that the city clerk's office will be hosting our fourth Passport Saturday event of the year, this Saturday on November 15th. So this is intended for folks who need to utilize weekend hours to come obtain city services. There are still a lot of appointments available between 9:00 a.m. and 3:00 p.m. So please look at the information online. It's at www.northglenn.org/passports, or anybody interested can call 303-450-8756, and staff in the clerk's office would be happy to walk you through the requirements of getting a passport and help you schedule that appointment. And then, oh, also wanted to note one very important detail about the event. It kicks off our donation drive to benefit the Riverdale Animal Shelter. And so if anybody brings in a donation of unopened, unexpired pet food or pet supplies, you can receive a free passport photo for your appointment. So thank you.
Great, thank you. City Manager Guyer?
Nothing this evening, thank you.
City Attorney Hoffman?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. I do not have anything to report tonight.
All right, thank you. Moving on, the consent agenda, is there a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Please open the vote.
The vote is open.
Please vote.
I will close that vote, and the consent agenda passes unanimously.
We have a public hearing tonight, CB 2033. Will the city clerk please read the title?
A bill for an ordinance affirming the city of North Glenn's existing permitting review process for electric vehicle charger permit applications, opting out of the adoption of additional permitting requirements in accordance with House Bill 24-1173, and amending Section 11-4-6 of the North Glenn Municipal Code regarding the same.
I will now open the public hearing on CB 2033. Comments are limited to five minutes per speaker. Is there anyone who would like to speak either for or against CB 2033? Do you, is it a question about this particular public hearing? Okay, no, we're not doing that right now, though, but thank you. There will be some more information after the public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak for or against? Okay, hearing none. I will close the public hearing. Ordinances on second reading, CB 2033. Is there a motion to approve on second reading?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Sustainability Coordinator Mara Owen will provide a summary of this item.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I actually have a quick presentation because I think visuals are amazing, and so we're going to try that. Okay, so essentially what we're looking at is the state passed a bill, which essentially said we are trying to make EV charging, specifically looking at land use, easier. They created a model land use code, and based on HB 1173, it actually requires every municipality with 10,000-plus residents to do one of three actions by the end of the year. We are in that boat, so this is going to be one of the things we have to comply with. We have option one, two, or three. We're either going to adopt the state-issued EV land use code. So this is, again, looking more at land use specifically versus any sort of permitting specific with the building code. Two, you could just adopt the permitting standards directly from the bill, which are a little rougher. And then three, you have the option to opt out by just affirming your existing land use codes because they already meet the goal of what's, the state is looking at, or because you don't want to. Reporting requirements, no matter what we choose, there will be two reports that will be required on March 1st and January 31st, looking at compliances, and then what the applications are. In terms of EV leadership and EV charging, specifically permitting leadership, I just wanted to put a little note in here that we actually are one of only three in the entire country to have gotten gold designation in terms of the charging smart, which is a national designation by the Department of Energy. It was the city of Chicago, the city of New Orleans, and then the city of North Glenn, which is crazy. So I think we're doing pretty good, is my goal. So we did get that awarded just this, recently, on October 23rd, 2025, at the Drive Clean Colorado Summit. They were our technical partner for the year-long process to get through and get all the paperwork to prove that we had done all the pieces. They review all of our land use codes, all of our building codes, all the pieces that we could be doing to get better, and we really feel like we are doing a good job in this area. So our current proposal is instead of adopting the state's model, because we have just been a whole year going through our model, to continue with our current process, and to actually opt out of the state requirements, given that option three, and maintain our current effective process, which would have been section, basically our UDO, our Unified Development Ordinance, to reflect that we're making this decision. Planning Commission did review this and unanimously, unanimously recommended adoption of option three, essentially. We are looking at opting out a lot of it, because our current process does adequately, adequately meet the goals that the state is trying to come up with. It doesn't add any additional costs. We don't have to adopt new standards and train everyone on how to use them, no additional staff time, and it does maintain local control of land use permitting. If approved tonight, we would comply with our deadline. Staff would prepare the required reports in March and in January, and we do recommend adopting.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Questions or comments? Councilmember Burns?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you so much for presenting this. Just very super cool. I just, I just want to give like kudos to you and your team for, once again, like being ahead of the curve, and sort of like setting even better standards that the state is trying to oppose upon us. So I think, you know, once again, supporting Home Rule, and this is why, right? Okay, just wanted to give a Home Rule plug. Thank you.
Councilmember Condo?
Ditto what Councilmember Burns said. I think that it's really admirable, sorry to use that term, to be third in, in the country. But again, I think this just underscores that we, as a city, are very much on the leading edge, and you're largely responsible for that, so I want to make sure that you're getting credit. Thank you.
Councilmember Roper?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for this presentation. Again, thank you for all the work that you've done on this. To echo what my councilmates have said, just a stellar job. I use the chargers out here, and they're always ready to go. They're always functioning, which isn't always the case in other municipalities. So thank you. I appreciate it.
I was going to say the same. Thank you to you and your team. You're doing incredible work. This was also a lot to put this together. Thank you for being here. It was a very clear presentation, and we appreciate you.
Thank you.
So thank you. All right, please open the vote.
The vote is open.
Please vote.
I will close that vote, and CB 2033 on second reading.
Moving to resolutions, CR 110. Will the clerk please read the title?
A resolution appointing a Ward 2 member to the Diversity, Inclusivity, and Social Equity Board of the City of North Glenn, Colorado.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, well, I would like to invite Abby Hosterman forward to introduce yourself to council. Tell us all about you.
Hi, how are you all?
Good, how are you?
Longtime listener, first-time caller. My name's Abby Hosterman. I've been a North Glenn resident for seven years. I've got two kiddos here. I own a small business. I'm a writer. I'm an artist in the area. I recently made a big change in my career that kind of freed up some extra time that I wanted to spend intentionally getting involved in my community. I picked like the perfect night to come to this meeting, apparently, because I got a crash course on all the cool stuff we're going to get to do. So yeah, I'm really, really excited to be part of the dice board and serve the community and get even deeper roots here in North Glenn. So thank you.
Great. Do we have any questions or comments? Councilmember Goff?
I'm just going to say thank you for applying. We appreciate the, you know, your willingness to serve your community, and we welcome you, and we look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Nowicki?
I just want to say, Abby, thank you for stepping forward. Jay and I had the opportunity to interview Abby, and wholeheartedly recommend her to the dice board.
Excellent. Councilmember Hermio?
Thank you, Mayor. You're going to fit in just great. Love your energy. I know you saw what we're
I'm ready.
about over here, so, yeah. So I just appreciate you for, you know, serving our community in the future, and I know you'll, you'll do great work. Thank you.
Well, yes, welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Please open the vote.
The vote is open.
Please vote.
I will close that vote, and CR 110 passes unanimously.
All right, discussion item tonight, flock safety cameras. Deputy Chief of Police Peter Rice will present this item. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. Give me a second here. I've got a lot of things with me tonight. Good evening. Before we start, I think, after listening to everybody tonight, I'd be remiss if I didn't, as the son of a Vietnam vet, that I didn't take the time to, to say thanks. It's not only in the city are we surrounded by vets. Some of my, you know, best friends, so thanks to everybody that has served and helped protect the country. You said the city's full of vets, so soon-to-be Marine Mom, congrats, right? So thanks for all that they do. You know, my father's a couple states away, but hopefully he hears it at some point. All right, so we're going to get talking about our flock camera system as it has been brought forward. brought forward, that there are some current concerns in the community, and I know that the cameras have made some, not only local news, but they've made some federal news, or national news, rather, as far as its implementation. So, I want to dispel some rumors, some misinformation. I want to give some factual stuff as why we started the implementation of it. When you look at it now, it's pushing over three years ago that we started this project in an effort to increase public safety in the community. So, hopefully, by the end of the presentation, I will put everybody's mind a little bit more at ease in what they're truly used for. And not only the Flock cameras, I think that a lot of the people see cameras in this day and age pretty regularly, and I think that there's things that look like cameras, that the viewer recording them, that isn't necessarily so. So, I'm hoping that by the end of this, I'll be able to shed a little bit more light on to what it is that we, as your police department, is doing in the community. And this is how it was brought forward, brought forward from some concerns. Like I said, a lot of stuff that has made the media, various forms of the media, something that we have always tried to push is where are you getting your information from? If you're a resident in the community and it deals with public safety, we've always asked that you get vetted information, and if the police department is pushing it out, you can trust it. There are numerous, not to try to pick up on certain social media platforms, but when stuff is read on Nextdoor, I just ask that people temper their response to it, and if there's information that you want, or that we feel that is a public safety concern, or that it is an issue, the information comes from us and not some of the social media. So, like I mentioned previously, we started this project back in '22, right, in an effort when things, this was coming to light, meaning that the systems were becoming far more technologically advanced in order to capture license plate reading, and it's in an effort to, for public safety, first and foremost. The tool has afforded us great opportunity from an investigatory standpoint, and as I move into some of the concerns of the community, hopefully, when we have a discussion here, I'm able to ease the minds of what we're actually truly utilizing just in the Flock camera system itself. So, the fear that we're constantly surveilling or misusing the collection of data, how long is it that we can hold the data and our transparency and oversight, and do we have policy procedure rules set in place so that none of the data is used maliciously? So, data retention, we can only hold it for 30 days. That's all that the license plate reads are for, unless, right, we find that the license plate is involved in a crime, and it's evidence, just like everything else, we can enter it into evidence, and then we can have them hold on to that data. It's very limited access. It's law enforcement personnel only that can access it, and it tracks all of the motions that people go into place to see if a certain license plate was used, what camera did it hit on, all of that stuff is tracked. Just because it hits your license plate in your car, it doesn't pick up facial recognition. This is just a tool to point you in the direction for the vehicle, not the human in the vehicle. That comes down, that's what we keep saying, this is just an investigatory tool. Speeds up time, speeds up location, and it affords us the opportunity to then build upon the investigation, but it does not have facial recognition. We have systems set in place regarding our policy inside the police department. We coincide with, obviously, with state municipal laws or federal laws, and we, this is not for traffic enforcement. Now, with that being said, it notifies us, for example, if the license plate is stolen, it sends us notifications that there's a vehicle, whether the license plate's stolen, the vehicle's stolen, things of that nature, that's what the technology is used for, but it's not capturing, we're not writing tickets for that if it's, the vehicle is speeding, doesn't use its turn signal, things of that nature, it's not used in that capacity. This is a new feature in light of things that are happening nationally, right, and as you'll notice, how I highlighted the state of Colorado, again, to ease concerns, I had read an article where it dealt with reproductive rights, that there was accusations in the state of Texas, that that's what it was being used for. And these filters, as you can see, were already put in place by Flock, that it's not allowed for immigration and reproductive rights searches. So, Flock has already taken the proactive steps to not even allow the filters to search for that. These are our existing Flock camera locations. So, I know that you folks had the packet beforehand and reviewed it, and you might see variances in the cameras listed compared to these 10 cameras, and that's where I'll take a little bit to explain that. So, when we first implemented Flock, Flock gave us more than a lot of 10 that we're paying for in a test and evaluation period to see what was getting the most reads and that was most beneficial to the agency. And we were allowed the use of the extra cameras until they had all 10, this was written in the contract, until they had all 10 physically situated in the city. The last two, right, we talked about going into this MOU in '22, we're just finished last Friday because we had to have CDOT approval. Nothing against to the folks at CDOT, but it took two years for them to finally approve the cameras, as you can see, because they own the land, exiting I-25 at 104 and 120. So, that's, we were still capturing data up until the 31st of October, so I hope that I'm clarifying that. But these are our current up-and-running Flock camera systems that are in the city. Those are the ones that we had, and as you can see, that this is the most recent month worth of data. You can see that's how many vehicles are traveling, that's how many reads we're getting on all of those different cameras. As you can see, it's quite a bit. We get a high volume worth of traffic here through the city. That just breaks it down to our busiest cameras, so you can see our highest volumes of vehicles, 120th, right, I-25, not to surprise anybody, right, those are our biggest corridors, those are our highest volumes of traffic. So, these are the charges and the crimes that we get notified of. So, for example, the hot list data where it says non-owned, bless you. Those are other agencies that have entered something in, and their hot list has hit on our camera. So, say, for instance, there was homicide or a missing person out of Castle Rock, and they drove through and it hit our cameras, or wanted people from our neighboring jurisdictions, whether it's Thornton or Westy, right, since they're a lot closer, and it pings off of our cameras that are on the border, that's where that comes through. Our custom hot list, that is stuff that we enter in from our investigatory leads that, you know, we would want follow-up on if we were able to identify somebody through whatever means, and when we entered it in on the custom hot list, then, conversely, right, if one of our suspects, and I can give you an example of this, we had that kidnapping that was, or alleged kidnapping, that was about a month ago, two months ago, right, where the female was drugged into the car. This was the first place we went. We went to Flock. Once we were able to identify the vehicle, we put it in, and a neighboring agency to the south located the car, and it said that this is an active kidnapping out of North Glenn, and they contacted the car, and the suspect, nor our victim, was not in the vehicle, but it gave us more investigatory leads to continue to move on, right? We didn't, we just used that as continued information gathering and moved down the road until ultimately we did find their location. But that's an example of that. Another one was, this was a little bit more terrifying, was aggravated motor vehicle theft that we had at the post office, sorry, at the post office, right, where the people ran into the post office real quick. It was this time of year, so what did they do? They left their car running, and unfortunately, there was an infant in the backseat. So, immediately, right, because we had the owners of the car, we were able to, long story short, right, recover the car, take the suspect into custody, and more importantly, find the infant in the car seat that was placed in the roadway. But it was all because of this, right? Because time was of the essence when it came to that. So, that is, those are the types of crimes, as you can see that those are listed, that's what Flock alerts us to. Here's some more incidents that, I know that the last one is the one I touched on first, where the woman was drugged in the car, and we were able to locate her, or, sorry, not locate her, locate that vehicle due to this, and then continue our investigation to make sure that she was fine, and recover the car and the suspect. These are more examples of what our intent and our purpose to use those are, and they're in conjunction with good investigation, right? So, when we had, the metro area was getting hit with Walgreens, where they were jumping the counter and going back and taking drugs from the pharmacy. We had one, ours, at 120th, and I think they hit 12 Walgreens. First thing we did was go to their video surveillance at the Walgreens, right, and we were able to get a make and a model of the car, but we weren't able to see the license plate. But then, when you dump that information into the Flock camera system, it starts whittling it down. And when we realized that we had that many in the metro area, and you're continually seeing the same motor vehicle, eventually, it picked up the license plate, and it led to a lead and ultimately a conviction. So, the Flock camera systems are just one system of cameras in the city of many that we use, or that we encourage our residents to use, we encourage our businesses to use to protect themselves. And the misinformation is that the police department is storing this data and sitting around watching surveillance all day. I can tell you that's not happening. It just, that's not realistic for us to do, the, what appear to be cameras that are on our traffic control devices, as you, those aren't cameras that were recording you as you come in and out of the city. Those are traffic control devices that trigger the traffic lights and the signals, where those aren't controlled by us, that we're, the police department is not monitoring that. You know, just a year ago, I stood before you folks, and the city has that reimbursement plan for the cameras, because cameras matter. They're a deterrent of crime, they help us, there are registries out there in the community, but that's all private industry, that's all private sector. We don't control that. They can give it to us, or they can choose not to give it to us as a private citizen that, we don't push one system or another as a police department. We felt comfortable with the Flock system, with their technology and their advancements, and that's why we chose, after doing our research, we chose to go with them. We have discussions with partners in the community, but ultimately, that's their decision, what it is that they, or where they choose to set up cameras, if any. And if we notice that they have them, we ask if a crime is committed, if they're willing to help us out and give us the data to help us with the investigation. That goes with it. Moving forward, some of the communication, right, besides tonight and trying to get some information out, I met with our PIO, and we'll work on the city, and kind of like our, on the police portion of our webpage, where we have our immigration policy, to have a forward-facing webpage that, you know, talks about some frequently asked questions, or some, you know, different things that residents might have concern with. Boulder has one forward-facing, it's, I was looking at it today, and I think that ours can mirror a lot of that, because I'm assuming that they've received, when I say Boulder, Boulder PD, that they've received similar questions, you know, in very recently. So, we have plans to implement that. We regularly have things as far as any kind of, the case is solved, any complaints, any kind of policy violations, anything like that, we have systems set and check in place, whether it's our policy, our standard operating procedures, at our community engagement, where we have one at the police department on Wednesday night, instead of, instead of Friday with Coffee with the Chief, it's Wednesday night with command staff, and we're going to be talking about cybercrime and identity theft with the holiday season, so we're going to touch on this as well. Again, if folks just have some questions and they want some clarity, I'd be, we're more than happy to give it to them. And we've talked about working with CCP, so again, they can disseminate the proper message in the message of how it is that we're using the cameras, and that we're using the cameras as a means to public safety, right? We've recovered lots of stolen motor vehicles, and it has been immensely, immensely helpful, and especially when you're talking about the cases of the juvenile in the backseat, right, a kidnapped woman who's a victim of domestic violence, time is of the essence. There's a reason why, as I put in the packet, the Center for Missing and Exploited Children, you know, stands behind the Flock system, because if there's ever an Amber Alert, or there's things of that nature, finding that criminals use cars, and that's the mode of transportation, and this cuts down time when time could be of the essence. It has been an immense, immensely helpful public safety tool, but it alerts law enforcement when there's something criminal going on, and allows us, and it's not an active camera that we're just sitting, watching surveillance. The municipal, you know, our municipal buildings have video surveillance for our own safety, and no different than folks in the community. I think I covered a bunch. Questions?
Councilmember Condo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, DC, for that presentation. So, I just want to pare it back what I heard to make sure I have understood you. it back what I heard to make sure I have understood you correctly. So these cameras are not like a real-time surveillance camera like you might see at a bank or in the casinos in Las Vegas. We're, we're really talking about a tool that is either an alertment or for follow-up investigation purposes. Much, I, I guess I would kind of think of it similar to my ride-along, similar sort of technology that's mounted on the police cruisers, right? Those cameras do the same thing, right? They are looking and reading the license plate as the cruiser is driving through the city, except these are, these are variant that is permanently mounted, mounted in a fixed location?
Yes, sir. So what it allows us to do is if, a lot of times, right, say that the video surveillance at a bank, to use a, a bank as an example, a lot of times the cameras are, are in the interior and on the outside, it might be difficult to, you just might catch a glimpse of it. And the technology of Flock allows us to type in make, model, color and it, and it whittles it down and, and gives us real-time information and leads and can point us in the right direction. And ultimately, then you still have to do the investigation. There, there's a lot more that goes into it other than just a license plate read.
Gotcha. And then a follow-up. So the, what I was trying to wrap around my head when I was reviewing this is some of the jurisdictional issues. So when, when we as a city sign up onto the contract with Flock, does that authorize other jurisdictions to look at what we have in our system? Or do we have to like have an IGA or anything like that? How does that, how does that work exactly?
With the IGA, so yes and no, right? So when I, when we sign up for Flock and we'll, let's just use Thornton for convenience sake, right, because it's next door and Thornton has Flock as well. I'll send them to essentially a friend, a friend request. I'll send them a request saying, hey, are you willing to share your license plates with me? And we do it vice versa. So crime doesn't know jurisdictional boundaries, right? So what we want to across the law enforcement community is share that information so that if Thornton was to have a homicide and then they were driving to our city and we were able to track the car down because of the license plate reads in our city, we don't want those folks in our city. So we're, we, on the initial, do they have access to our cameras? No, not until we give them permission to. And that is controlled. There's four administrators at the police department. We, we keep it minimal, but only three make those decisions as far as the jurisdiction that we choose to allow to, to use that, to, to share back and forth. It has to be for legitimate law enforcement purpose.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Councilmember Goff?
Thank you, Mayor. Remember to turn the microphone on this time. Thank you, Deputy Chief. I, how many other, how many requests do we get from other states? Do you have any kind of a sense of that? I mean, you talked about, I mean, is, is that a common thing and is?
No. I don't know the exact number of out of states.
But we do get some. Does it, does, do they, are they, those requests identify what the crime is or, or the suspected crime or?
To go back to the, all they're getting is if they have to enter something into the system. That's where I mentioned the, or that we don't own it, right? So again, there's a homicide in El Paso, Texas, and they dump, the suspect was last seen driving this car with this plate. And if we share data, the only thing it's going to say is that vehicle just hit, driving northbound on I-25 at Castle Rock, Denver, Thornton, North Glenn. That's what it's, that's the data that they're receiving is and where, what camera did that license plate ping off of? But they have to enter that in. They can't jump into our system and start searching.
Okay. That's, that's good to know. So then I'm, I guess I'm trying to understand we were talking about the filter because if, if someone from another state, you know, suspected, I don't know, reproductive right violation that their state's laws has, say, and they put in this license plate request or whatever to like say North Glenn or the state of Colorado, they have, do they have to identify what they're looking for so that the filter works or how does, how does that work?
So depending upon what the, the, the reason for the contact is, and that's where our state, I forget how many states, was there six or seven states, California, where depending upon the reason, it will not, it won't filter that. That's a Flock mechanism due to what's, how our state is on those laws that are governed inside of our state. And you're right, different states, Commander Lauk and I were just talking about that. Different states in the country, right, have different rules and, and laws, but at least our state with Flock has the mechanism sets, set in place that coincide with our laws.
I guess I just have some concerns that if, you know, they were looking for like someone, they could make up a, a accusation to put in the, the system so that it would be, you know, something that, that would get through the filter.
You're going to use it illegally or misuse it? They could do that in Colorado, too, right? Like I can't stop, like if someone's going to use it with malicious intent and let alone use the system for it's not designed, the system is used for legitimate law enforcement means.
And who, who enforces that? Is it the Flock system or is it the state laws? Are there federal laws for this sort of information sharing?
You'll have to explain. I'm not understanding.
Well, I guess like in, you know, this is a hypothetical, but if some state was desperate to get a hold of somebody and so they claim that the person was a murderer and they don't even have evidence for that. They just say that so it can get into the Flock system and everybody in this whole country will be looking for that person.
A motor vehicle gets entered into the Flock system.
Well, okay. So, so that, that license plate gets entered in. So, you know, I guess I'm just wondering if, if like you said, that's not a legal purpose for this system. Like who, who will say that? Who will, what's the punishment? Who's the enforcement? How do you, like if they, I don't know, I'm just, this is a hypothetical thing, I know, but we're in kind of a.
I guess, well, it would depend ultimately about what crime is that you're talking about as being committed. If you're talking about making up a, a false accusation and, and a charge that doesn't exist.
I guess that's what I'm wondering. I mean, if, if, you know, somebody in some, the police department or sheriff's department or whoever in some state that has laws that don't coincide with Colorado and they want to try to get around that to get a hold of this person, this vehicle, this license plate number, you know, they, they could make something up. So I'm just wondering who, who is, who's keeping track of that?
It would depend on the jurisdiction. It would depend on where the crime is committed and what the crime was.
I mean, it probably is not very likely to happen, but I just was, something that made me think about.
What you're talking about in and of itself is either illegal against that agency's policy, whether it's state, federal, all the things you're talking about is misuse of the system. And that's not what we're doing. That's not what we're using. Could there be someone that has ill-willed intent? Sure. I suppose that anything is possible on that.
Yeah, I'm not, I don't have any concerns about North Glenn Police Department. I was just curious if someone was trying to get sort of work the system, if there, what, if there are any safeguards in place that you know of.
The data they would get is that the license plate that they entered drove down our street. And I mean, that's, that's the information that they would get. They would know that it, it hit a camera in our city at a time.
And do we, what's North Glenn's likelihood of like, you know, making an effort to stop that vehicle to help out this other agency? Is that something we do?
It would depend, it would depend what, what it was in. If it got, if it was in the system that the, the person driving that car was wanted for murder, we would pull it over or attempt to.
Okay. Well, I guess that's, that's what I wanted to know. So I'm just trying to understand how the ins and outs.
Because we would go off of the assumption that they're doing the right thing and that it's entered into the system the right way with legal law enforcement. Like I'm not assuming the worst of other jurisdictions. I'm assuming that they took the time, they entered it in. This is someone wanted for whatever crime. Now, if it turned out when we pulled the car over, the person or people that we contacted didn't meet all of the criteria or what was entered in, we're not going to arrest them, right? That's the investigation part. That's the point I want to drive home. This is, this is a license plate on a car that gives us an investigatory lead to contact those people. And then you have to do good cop work and assume that, right, we're, we're going to take those steps and measures and vet the information. No different than the agency that helped us out on the domestic violence. The suspect was not in that car, nor was the victim. They didn't arrest the people in that car. They called us and said, hey, we found the car. The female's not here, nor is your suspect. What do you want us to do with the car? We're letting the other people go. That's good cop work. So we would do the same.
Okay. Well, thank you. I appreciate the explanation.
You're welcome.
City man, or city manager, sorry. Councilmember Burns. Goodness.
Oh, I didn't know. I got a promotion.
Yeah.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Just kidding. I don't really want that. Thank you so much. And thank you so much to council for agreeing to discuss this this evening. Appreciate that. So I guess like I just wanted to build off Dr. Goff's premise, like, and you know, specifically the cases out of Loveland and Bomar most recently, right? I think like, and Denver obviously is having a very big discussion around Flock right now. And so I think like what I am particularly am looking for is assures and like protocol around, you know, if an officer accuses a resident of stealing a package based off license plate data, right? Like this is exactly what happened where those two, what, where your description of Flock cameras and how they seem to be being used in other jurisdictions aren't matching. So I think.
How so?
Yeah.
No, I'm asking how so?
How so?
That what I'm explaining isn't.
So the way, because the way you're saying that Flock cameras are used is that they're not surveilling people, right? It's just like this car is here at this moment based on information. And so what the case in Bomar, out of Bomar is a woman was driving in the area and then she was accused of stealing a pa, a package off someone's porch.
Yes.
Using Flock data. So right? So like, and to your words, that would be like bad cop work, right? Because those, in theory, Flock cameras should not be used for something like that.
No, they should be used to contact the person. If the vehicle was, it was in the area and they believed that that was a possible suspect, then you drive over and you contact them and you talk, but that's when the investigation begins. That's, we do that all day, every day with witnesses that say hit and runs, right? Was involved in hit and run. I think I got the license plate. It's partial. It's this car, right? And we go to the house where it registers. We find the car. It has damage. I still don't know the driver. So I have to interview them and I have to ask them questions. So the Flock camera system gives you a lead to go do an investigation, right? So again, don't know much more about that case that you're referring to other than the cop showed up to the house and it was a question over the porch pirate, right? Or stealing a package from a.
They cited her.
Okay.
Just straight off of Flock camera data.
So our protocols and our procedure is that, that is an investigatory tool, no different than your Ring doorbell camera. That captures a plate, no different than the neighbor's camera. And then when you go and contact them, then you're allowed to have the investigation. And you still have to meet the threshold of probable cause that you believe that that person did that crime at that time. And that's where the big part with the Flock cameras doesn't do facial recognition. It doesn't, that just points you in a direction to go.
Yeah. And I think that's exactly what at least I needed to hear and probably a lot of residents, that this tool is not used to accuse people. It's a tool in an investigation. It's no, it's not an end-all, be-all situation.
No, it is not.
Just because your car pings on something doesn't mean you should be found guilty or accused of something. And so I think that brings me at least a lot of comfort and hopefully people listening. I think to also build off Dr. Goff's point of, you know, people entering, you know, a line items, in my visual brain, I'm just imagining like, you know, it's an Excel spreadsheet sort of a situation. And I think like what happened in Loveland, I guess my thought before question to that is when did the filter for Colorado turn on for reproductive?
I'm not sure. Sometime this year.
Okay. Because.
It's, it's recent.
Okay. Cause there was a case out of Loveland in August that there was an officer providing information to ICE illegally. Where like, you know, they had pinged somebody and like that was the line item was just ICE. So I think like to build off Dr. Goff's concerns that that can happen, but obviously Loveland Police Department took steps to, to take care of it and I assume we would do the same. We have our own internal protocols for that sort of thing.
Correct.
Yeah. Okay. So that is like sort of our, those were my main questions. And so thank you so much for clearing that up. That Flock cameras are essentially used as an investigation tool. They're not an end-all, be-all. They do not accuse anybody of anything. It is a point of data.
Yes.
Awesome. Thank you.
I'm going to stay here for just a minute because I think we're talking about a very specific case that went viral and was local. And so my question is, do you use examples like that to train your team?
Yes. In, not so much those two, but more so to, to piggyback off of what you're saying is where we have found, and if it was attached in the packet and I specifically did it, we call it the, the four Cs, right? Code four. Stolen motor vehicles are very often forgotten to be taken out of the system as stolen. Stolen motor vehicles warrant a very specific tactical response from an officer due to the danger that typically comes with aggravated motor vehicle theft. But because of misinformation that either got, right? So your car got stolen, it got recovered and you're excited, you get your car back and next thing you know, you're driving down the street the next day and we pull you over because your car still registers that it's stolen. But you pull over and then we educate our cops to say, all right, hang on a second. Let's take a, a look at the big picture. We reconfirm it to go off of what it is that you're asking. We have fail safes that we try to ensure that we're going through even on that crime because the officer should be heightened from an officer's safety perspective. But that's why you see that, that checklist, that the SOP that we have on that is to ensure that it's the investigation that's the most important piece to that and not jumping from A to Z without going all through, through the middle of it. So yes, I'm, I'm just saying it, it's ongoing and constant training, just maybe not necessarily that we've used those two specific examples. But it's, it's the, it's the not jumping to conclusions. Like that, folks, this has been happening since the beginning of time. Witnesses are often, right? They see something in the dark, they're under stress, that gives bad information, right? It's still incumbent upon the police officer to go to, to vet the information and to make sure that we establish that whether it's a camera, an eyewitness, it's the investigation piece that's the most important part. And the training is continual and ongoing in the police department to ensure and we make sure that they understand that it's just a tool to point you down the, the right, you know, avenue. And we do have them on the cars, our patrol cars. So it, it's not just the, you know, the, the fixed Flock ones, right, where, where. Where we are getting stuff when we're out and moving, and it gives us the legal right to contact those folks. When you look at the sheer numbers of the amount of hits that flock, right? It's, when you want to talk about statewide, you're talking millions, right? We're talking about two cases that have gone viral. And I'm not trying to dismiss those investigations. But again, or, cops are human too, and they make mistakes. And we try to do everything we can internally to ensure that it doesn't happen in our community because the first thing it does is erodes trust between us and our community. And it's the last thing on earth we want. But I understand the concern and that those, but you have to understand how hard we work to train our officers that once you get that and you make the contact, do A, B, C, D, E, go down the checklist. And then when you establish stuff, because it happens more often than you think that license plates get stolen, motor vehicles get stolen, and they just don't get removed from the system in a timely manner. And we contact those folks all the time, and you folks never hear about it, right? Because we just call, we take it out of the system for them, and then we just say, hey, this is what happened, and everybody moves on.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Nowicki?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, DC, for being here and for all of this information. It was very helpful, and there are a number of good, good things that I think you guys are putting in place to kind of help make this a really useful tool. So I have a couple of questions here. Just out of curiosity, does it, is my plate being read every time I pass a camera?
A flock camera?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. In and out of the city?
Yes.
So my plate could be read dozens of times throughout the day. Okay. You use the example of the friend request with Thornton. So typically, you know, with the friend request, I send a friend request, and we're buddies for life, right? With the Thornton, is it on a case-by-case basis? Or is it kind of a one-and-done kind of friend request?
No, we would have to stop being friends. I would have to turn that off.
Oh, okay. So we're friends, it's, we're good to go until we're not friends?
Correct.
Okay, got it. Right, okay. That's helpful. So...
And I'm friends with Thornton, I like them.
Okay. And you don't, in thinking about this question, maybe you don't know the answer, but what cities are part of our network? And if you don't, and again, I understand it, I'm sorry?
152.
Okay, perfect. That was my next question. I didn't want you to go through all 152, but maybe you could give me kind of a number. So 152.
I believe, I think, I'm holding Commander Lauke to that.
152?
Yeah.
Okay. So with that, how often are there false positives in the system? You kind of mentioned that a little bit with the pieces of the previous cars not being removed, things like that. So obviously, that would...
It's not a flock data issue.
Okay.
That has to do with the removal of it from either CCIC and CIC. That has to do with it being removed. So again, if your vehicle is stolen and then it gets recovered and it's never removed from the system as being stolen, Flock doesn't know that.
Right.
Because it's not removed from the database.
Right.
That's not a flock flaw. That's typically a human error from our records or our police or the victim that gets their car back and doesn't... So to go on the stolen motor vehicle, say it's stolen in North Glenn, but it's recovered in Lakewood a day later, and the car's operable and it has the keys because it was a puffer or whatever, and they, there's no damage. And the owner of the car goes down to Lakewood and grabs it, and Lakewood's like, hey, it gets lost. Remember, tell North Glenn to take this out of the system. And you get busy and you go to work or whatever, and it just never happens. That's more, that's a human error. The system doesn't know. It's not the flock system's error.
So it's typically someone in the police department removes that from the system?
Yes.
Okay.
But we have to know, typically, we'll get a notification through records that announce that one of our steals has been recovered and to take it out of the system.
Okay. So how often are there kind of false positives?
Oh, I don't know. I really don't. It's not as, it's not that often, but it happens.
Like in a month, per se?
Not even.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Has Flock ever been discussed with CCPP?
I don't know.
I know you mentioned it in your report of kind of doing that.
I don't, I don't believe so. And I think it's just in light of the topic being brought forward that we're all for it.
Okay.
And, right, with their connections with the community and just having open dialogue and discussions. To me, the information is power. Let's stop the misinformation and thinking the wrong way about this stuff that isn't taking place out there.
Right. And I agree, and I don't want to be like a Denver because I do believe this is a useful technology. And, you know, reading the report, it sounds like it generates a lot, a lot of assistance for you all. And, you know, I don't want to throw the baby out with the bathwater.
Massive amounts of assistance.
Right. So that said, you know, there is kind of the AI element to this, the mass surveillance element that freaks people out, you know? And, you know, and can erode community trust if we're not careful, which is why I do think it's important. And you had included this in your presentation of, you know, sharing it with CCPP going forward. I do think, I like the idea of creating the kind of public-facing page with the FAQ as well. And it would also encourage kind of the public annual reports maybe posted to that page. I know not everyone probably wants to go read numbers, but it's there. It's available, it's transparency. Also, I do think on that list would be important to publish a list of our partner agencies and who is in the network, all 152. So people have an idea. Again, transparency. And I'm curious about this point, something I've thought about. And maybe I need Attorney Hoffman's input on this, but barring access for federal or out-of-state requests unless there's a court order, is that feasible? Would that hamper things? What are your thoughts on that?
I have no idea as it relates to the flock system if that would even be possible because I don't know if North Glenn gets notice as to who is requesting the hits every time. I just don't know. Now, we are required to comply with state law, which is why you have the filters that are there because, again, there is some tension in some areas between federal and state law, and we are required to follow Colorado law.
Okay. Lastly, I do think, and it sounds like you kind of alluded to this, and correct me if I'm wrong, but that kind of documented error handling when maybe a misread triggers a stop. Is that what you were kind of referring to with some of the protocol?
Two different things right there. A misread is in the camera, a lot of times, right? Motor vehicles are moving and sometimes it speeds. Sometimes the camera, as smart as they are, it might, it could read a zero as an O or it might pick something else. That's why if you look at the four Cs, right? Where we have, where if our officers get behind it, they re-verify it. We have things that are set in place through AdCom, our communication center, where if it comes up as a flock hit, they verify it. And again, more so on stolen license plates and aggravated motor vehicle theft because it garners a very specific patrol response with officers and tactics and things of that nature. So we want to verify that stuff before, so we're safe.
Right.
And so we know how to do it. But we don't just go off of the hit, especially when you're dealing with out-of-state plates. You know, if it's, whatever, a Texas plate, because a lot of times the numbers could be wrong or it could be reading the numbers, it thinks it's a Colorado plate, but meanwhile, it's a Texas plate. So we have those fail safes in place that we verify before we do that.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Roper?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for being here and thank you for this presentation. It was very informative. I was on a ride-along, and the officer that I was with had a hit that wasn't a real hit. And so I was able to see in person the fail safes that are put into place to make sure that the residence dignity was kept intact and they investigated it and moved on. So just confirming, just because someone has a hit or the flock system is notified, that doesn't take away their right to due process at all?
No.
Thank you. And then I just also, as a community member, I appreciate this. I appreciate this, what the flock system is doing and what it's identifying in our community. So thank you for that.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Mayor Proton?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think everybody covered most of the points that I had questions on. This was actually a request that I brought forward back in 2022 when the flock cameras came out. So I'm a big supporter. However, I do understand that violations and problems happen due to lack of training and lack of clear policy. So I think that's how we solve all the problems, all of the issues that have happened in like Bomar or Loveland. It's because somebody wasn't or didn't have a clear protocol to follow. So I think knowing that and having our residents understand that is super important so they understand that these cameras are useful. When people say we're worried, we're concerned about safety in our city, but we can't have an officer on every street. So these make up for that. And you can tell by the amount of hits and different types of crimes that they've helped, I guess, find or, you know, solve is the case, is it's making a difference. Something that Councilmember Goff said made me think about like who, you know, who, I guess, if somebody violates or something, like who follows up. But I do remember, I think it's just recent, and it might have been after Bomar, that Flock is, has a $100,000 fine for violating policy. Do you know anything about that?
I do not, no.
Okay, I think that's a new thing as well. I mean, that's a substantial fine, you know, if a violation occurs, if they're not following protocol. But I really support this discussion just because I think it's important that if we have, we're using technology, there's no way to get around it. That is the future, that's where we're going. You know, we're going to get into drones and all of that. And the number one thing when problems happen is because there's no communication between a police department and its residents. So engaging with CCPP, I think, is really great, as Councilmember Nowicki said, especially even, you know, around like the fail safes or things like that, or looking over the policy just for wording to help residents understand the communication more, as Councilmember Burns likes to talk about as well, right? So I think that's a great idea. I know they reviewed, I think, body cameras way back in the day, like in 2021. So it's always good just to have that perspective since they are the bridge between our residents, our community, and our police department. One clarification, one little piece of clarification, I think, because the question about sharing between, you know, other cities and states has come up. But you did mention that there's only four admins who have access to share those records or only three can actually share it, right? And I'm assuming they have a higher level of training and protocol that they have to follow. You're one of them.
It's myself, Commander Lauke. Lieutenant McNally will be the ultimate decision-makers. But from an administrative side, the fourth admin is our crime analyst, but that's solely for the ability to pull data and work through that. So those are the four. But she doesn't make decisions on, to go back to Councilman Nowicki's on, to friend request. That's something that Commander Lauke and I, we approve that at our level.
That's like another level of security for our residents.
Correct.
And I think the last communication I remember on flock cameras went out in like 2023. So I think that was in the connection. So it might just be time, especially because there's so much now in the news in Denver and Loveland, Bomar and on, just to let our residents know like, hey, you know, we have extra safeguards in place. We can't control what everybody else does, but we can control what we do here. So, yeah, that's it, absolutely. More communication, I think, is key right now.
Well, I can tell you from the, after tonight's conversation, there will be more training internally in the police department, because we're taking some new folks on here in the short term too, right? That are new to law enforcement in general. As I said, I already got in touch with our public information officer earlier today. I showed him that forward-facing page. He's working with our communication side to put that up on our website. I don't disagree with you. The more that, and if we get the assistance with CCPP, the more information that's out there, the less misinformation is out there. So it's all in an effort to let our folks know what it is that we're doing.
I appreciate that thoughtfulness and in learning from even this discussion. Like, we can give our officers more training, maybe even show them some of those videos from those news stories, what went wrong and why. But thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Condo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. One other kind of epiphany, I suppose, is that we had Mr. Brad Hutensky from HCP, the owner of The Marketplace, come and speak to us last week. And I think that, if I recall, that is the only retail location where a private entity has flock cameras. Are there any others that are considering? And can you comment a little bit about the public-private partnership?
There are others in the works in the community. There are some that we're in active discussions with. But again, it's their private property. We're also not, I'm not a flock salesman, right? So I have to be careful with, I love their system. I'm glad that we have it. I'm not, so, yes, there are other people in the community that are in the private sector and that if that's what they choose to place... Now, they do not, as private citizens, they do not get access. That's a one-way road, if that makes sense. Law enforcement's a two-way street, to use an analogy of that, right? We want it to be mutually beneficial to our neighboring partners that are in law enforcement, whereas the private sector, it is not. So I don't know, you're a one-way friend, I guess. They would just send the friend request to us and allow us the information on that, and we would thank them for that. But yes, there are other places in the city in light, because I know The Marketplace has been pretty vocal in the successes that it has helped deter crime in the amount of recoveries of motor vehicles that we've had there, that there are other, I mean, HOAs can do it. There's communities that do it all throughout when you're entering in. That's an HOA decision, right? Because that's how they govern their communities, no different than apartment complexes, businesses, on and on and on. And then they reach out to us and say, we would like to partner with you because they want to deter crime on their property.
Okay, thank you for that. Yeah, I did ask Mr. Hutensky if he had any numbers. Unfortunately, he did not. But, you know, anecdotally, what you showed here, I think, was really encouraging. So thank you for presenting that.
You're very welcome.
Thank you, and I believe that's our final question. Thank you.
Sure, all right.
Thank you, we appreciate it. All right, final item, public invited to be heard. This is an opportunity for public comment. Statements are limited to three minutes per speaker. Comments must be related to an item previously addressed by council during the meeting. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to council at this time? Please come forward. State your name and address or ward and provide your comments to council. Just a reminder, we're not going to answer questions, but we're going to hear you for three minutes.
Okay. My name's Jonathan Clyburn. I live in Ward III.
Okay, my name's Jonathan Clyburn, I live in Ward III, 11364 Sherman Drive. So he talked about data retention for 30 days, and from my knowledge, that really doesn't happen very often. You can't just easily go ask a company, hey, please delete my files. I've tried to do that for all kinds of companies, all kinds of things, just because I don't need the extra footprint on the internet if they're continuing to keep my information. Maybe it does happen for 30 days, but my question about is, I guess, and my thoughts are about data breach, maybe stalking, false accusations, which we all kind of talked about. You know, if it's on the internet, you got to believe some hacker, some anonymous group, some whoever, has access to that, and what do they want to do with it? So that's one thing I was thinking about. Not to mention, he said there's 10 in Northland, but then he has friends, so the friends, it's a network, so it's all the way everywhere, wherever, whoever can get access. Oh, hi, I need a friendship, friendship, here, here you go, shake my hand, we're friends now. Does that number ever shrink? Does it grow? Does, do they do housekeeping on that? Does it continue to grow? Like, I'm concerned, period, because I've seen some of these, and I've been concerned about it for a while. I'm a law-abiding citizen, but you know what? What if that, what if that day comes where like the, you know, Twilight Zone happens or something? And just some happens, I got to grab my family, I got to grab my kids, I got to just go. You know, I don't trust the fact that they are saying there's only four admins, but, but it's like, okay, they have all these extra people that can just get a handshake. Who's watching these cameras? What are they doing with it? And, and not to mention, they're in shopping centers. I've been keeping track of these cameras for a long time. I don't like them. I think they, they can be used for good, but you know, good intentions, good intentions, you know? That's something I think people need to think about, is like, who has access? What are they doing? And, you know, like, with anything, you know, it's on the internet, so it's on a network. My other thoughts are, do these cameras ever shut down? How do they shut them down? Are they active 24/7, 365? And then I guess the last thing I have, you know, are there more cameras that they want to install more places, you know? I'm aware of a lot of these ones that they have around, I don't like them, I don't feel safe, especially with them being three in my one street on Malle Drive. That's all I have to say about that, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to council? No, okay, hearing none. We are going to move to an executive session, so I will entertain a motion that the city council hold an executive session pursuant to Section 4.5A for personnel matters regarding city manager performance.
Motion to adjourn to executive session.
So, a second.
Please open the vote.
The vote is open.
Please vote.
I will close that vote, and the motion to adjourn to executive session passes unanimously.
We will adjourn to the executive session.